We are back at the March 9th, 2021, meeting of the Hop Dog Union, British School District Board of Education. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to your worship, which stands on the nation, in the midst of all the great challenges we face. Superintendent's report, Dr. O'Hara.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update on COVID-19. We are at 218 cases, confirmed cases as of this afternoon. 152 of those are students, 66 staff. Just an update too for the board and the community. We may have, I can't confirm it for sure, but we may have our first example of spread within a classroom. So one of our buildings last week, we had a person test positive, and then while people were on quarantine, we had two others from the group test positive. So it's possible that it was spread in the classroom. So over the weekend, six positive cases. We'll be sending that later out tomorrow just to update the community. But it's just, I think, a reminder that we can't relax yet. We have to continue with the mask wearing. We have to continue with the social distancing. And it's getting better and better. But for the last couple of weeks, we were averaging less than one case per day. And now, you know, suddenly a little pop of six cases over a weekend. So just a word of caution. Regarding high school students, thank you to Dr. Prost and Mr. Cook and the administration at the high school. On March 2nd, we administered another successful ACT to our students. And I keep reminding the community, Hop Dog remains very unique in that regard, being able to provide the testing for our students. And then the last piece of my update is, following Thanksgiving and the holiday break and the winter recess, we had a week of distance learning. But we will not be doing distance learning following spring recess. We'll expect everybody, teachers, faculty, students, staff, to be in school for one of our regular in-person days for the week and days following spring recess. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hara. Before we get to the remainder of the agenda, there's two issues that I want to address, to which board members have gotten a number of questions over the last couple of weeks. The first is outdoor sports and spectators at those events. Previously, we were not allowing away teams to participate in watching the outdoor sports at our schools. And in turn, some schools were either threatening or promising not to allow our parents or spectators at their schools when we were playing on the road. That will no longer be the case. We are going to allow, pursuant to what the Suffolk County Department of Health recommends, we're going to allow visiting team fans, two per athlete, on the outdoor sports. And in turn, on the away games, our kids will be allowed to, spectators as well. Our athletic director will take care of administering and/or figuring out how to go about making that happen. But we will not be limiting spectators more than what we have to pursuant to the Department of Health's rules. The second issue is prom. There's been a lot of questions concerning whether we will or will not have a senior prom. The board has discussed this, and I am pleased to announce that we will absolutely be having a senior prom. The senior prom will be as extravagant and large as law allows. We will not be putting any artificial tempers or artificial restraints or artificial numbers on the number of people or where or when the prom will take place. Whatever the Department of Health allows, we will go that far. The board is not going to be in position, or will not put itself in a position of telling the students that the prom should be indoor or outdoor, picking the venue or anything like that. That entire decision will be, as it always has been, to the class advisor and the students that make up the prom committee, or whatever it's called nowadays. And whatever they want to do, to the extent that we can't do it pursuant to the law, it will be done. Plain and simple. Thank you. Five on the agenda is recognitions and awards. There are none here. However, just want to mention one thing. The Hop Dog Boys Track Team consisting of, and forgive me if I butcher any of the names, but Martine McDonald, Brandon Daggard, Oba, Oalau, sorry, and James Abruzzo competed in the Adidas Indoor Nationals 2021, going against the top athletes in the nation. They raced a relay together on Friday night, February 26th, competing in the 1600 meter sprint medley relay. And they finished fourth in the nation, earning them All-American honors. Congratulations to the boys. And Mr. Abruzzo is a frequent flyer here. Congratulations to you. Five B on the agenda is the presentations. Number one is the budget presentations. However, I'm going to ask Jackie to sit back for a minute. Let's go right to our principals. Last week, we had our high school and middle school principals just give us an update of how they were doing in their schools related to COVID. It was great and enlightening. We now have the elementary school principals here, Mr. Gagliardi, Dr. Rhongo, and Dr. Musio. Thank you for joining us tonight. We ask that you keep your comments, you know, as brief as possible, but you know, let us know how you're doing and what, if anything, we could do better to help you guys along. And any difficulties or challenges that you've had and any good things that have gone on. Mr. Gagliardi, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here. So even though we're three individual buildings, you know, we work very closely together. So we'll kind of share pieces of what we do every day and what we've done. So you don't have to do the same thing three times over. So, you know, one of the things I'm going to talk about is all three of the buildings are very excited to have the kids returning in person. So right now, there's a survey out. We're waiting to get that information back to see how many of our kids are going to return for the third semester. So parents have until March 12th, which is Friday. Third semester begins March 22nd. So it gives us about a week to prepare, hopefully, for more kids in person. We're looking at those numbers, so they're perking up a little bit. But parents will have a few days to respond to that survey and looking forward to an increase in that number and having kids with us in the building as we move into the spring. One of the things going on soon is iPad distribution. As you know, our students in 3, 4, 5 have the iPads. They've had, 3rd grade kids have had them most of the year. 4, 5 have always. Kindergarten kids currently have class sets in the room. And over the next two weeks, timeline goes as smooth as we hope. First grade, next week, we'll have iPads in their hands. And then 2nd grade, week after, which is March 22nd. So hoping by spring break, iPads, K5 in the kids' hands. And I just want to thank everyone connected to that, especially Dr. McCarthy. One of the things we talked about last time we were here were clubs. I believe, I forget where we were, it was October. And we got our clubs off the ground during the months of November and December. And they've been rockin' and rollin'. And that's been a welcome sight to have the kids participating in extracurricular activities with their class advisors. So that's been running real smooth. Thank you for allowing us to do that. Kids have enjoyed it and they'll continue to enjoy it through the upcoming months. So in all three buildings, that's going on and going very smoothly. So thank you. One of the things I just want to, we talked as a group, is really just to highlight the instruction that we're seeing in the classroom. It's amazing, the work that the teachers are doing through all this time. Having students in front of them in person, students at home virtual, then we have distance learning weeks where everyone's virtual. It's amazing. It's really something to celebrate, to honor, and really give a shout out to our teachers because all three of us agree, on a daily basis, we see such creativity and support, not only to students in front of them, but to the students that are home. So it's really, if anything comes out of this from all three of us, it's really just to highlight that work and thank them from the bottom of our hearts for their continued efforts. And our kids, our kids are resilient. They are happy to be there. We can see them smiling through those masks each and every day. And not only the kids in front of us, but also the kids that we see through cameras and webcams. We're connected with them. We get to see them daily, but they're happy. They love being part of the instruction. They love being especially in the building. And like we said and I started with, we're hoping to see more kids on campus, in the buildings, as we enter that last semester. So we're real excited for that. Thank you for all your support and all the things and resources you have given us because it really has been very, very smooth. But the team effort from where we talked about our teachers, from our support staffs, our administrative team, custodial, amazing, amazing. Continue to be awesome. Tyron Gole, everybody, I don't want to miss anyone. TAs, special ed aides, everyone from top to bottom. So all three of us want to say thank you to all of them. It's been going real smooth, real smooth. So I'm going to hand over to Dr. Rhongo. She's going to hit some other items. And then obviously, anything you want to throw by us, we'll answer for you guys. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rhongo?
Thank you. Okay, good evening and thank you for having us here tonight. Similar to what George spoke about at Bretton Woods, the numbers at Forest Brook of returning students is increasing. We look to be about 15 students on remote for the remainder of the school year once the next trimester starts, which is incredible. We started with about 40 home. So we have loved to welcome as many students back as possible. And the majority of the building procedures that we spoke about at the beginning of the year are still going strong. We still have across all three buildings staggered drop-off in arrival times, temperature checks, the daily questionnaires, social distancing, we're not fixing cohorts. And everything has really, really been working smooth and been working well. Everything we reimagined in place, we've had to make very, very little adjustments to. The students have adjusted incredibly well to our expectations. They're the real heroes and champions in all of this. Mask wearing is not an issue. They're doing their best to socially distance from each other. And they are, they're having fun with the instruction like George said. It's continuing, they're growing, they're learning. And most importantly, another key part of this effort is our staff. I mean, it's been an all-hands-on-deck approach. And, you know, every time we turn around, there's somebody there to help you. And that's, you know, I think that's something that's been very humbling this year. The amount of time I've had to ask for help from staff. This is not something we've done alone. It's really been a team and a building effort. Hopefully, today was a little bit of the taste of the weather to come. And we'll start getting the children outside more and more. Thank you to buildings and ground. They had installed some tents in the buildings earlier this year. We do anticipate their return shortly. So we'll be getting the kids outside as much as possible. And we just want to thank the community and the Board of Education for your continued support with all of our efforts and flexibility and, you know, just trust in us. It's been a very, very successful year for the three of us to feel despite all the challenges that have come our way. So we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Musio.
Good evening. I'd also like to thank you for the opportunity to be here to discuss our K5 curriculum highlights. I will be brief, but just touch upon a few topics that have been important across the K5 implementation, especially given the parameters of this year. So we are in full implementation, K5 with our TC program. And we have been able to provide the teachers with digital resources to support all of their classroom instruction when needed. So that has included video mentors and other digital resources like e-readers for students in K through 5. And as Mr. Gagliardi said, we are going to be providing K1 to children with e-readers or iPads soon to do individual work as well, just as our 3, 4, 5 students have been able to do. We also have Teachers College staff developers providing staff development in all of our buildings. And that has been really important because as teachers have had to reimagine what curriculum has been able to look like, they've also had to reimagine the structures of the school day in regards to reading and writing workshop. So we're very grateful for your support with these efforts. We will be preparing students in the upcoming months for the ELA and math assessments, unless the state is able to have a waiver provided for these assessments. But in the meantime, we are moving ahead in preparing students with instruction for these assessments. And again, TC has provided us with some staff development for the ELA assessment so that we can prepare our students as needed. Leslie Brophy has been very essential in providing us with ongoing tech support for our K5 buildings. She has met with our staff virtually most of the time. And she shares weekly or bi-weekly tips in regards to Google and different platforms that we're using across the district, as well as sessions that are tailored specifically to the needs of our staff. For example, she's coming tomorrow for my technology meeting in the morning. And she's going to be discussing what our March 26th staff development is going to look like across our building. And I know that she has done that in the other buildings as well several times this year. So we're really grateful for her work. And she's put tremendous efforts into these integrations. And also, our teaching staff has been very grateful for her support. Another adoption that is in full K5 implementation this year is our science program, Amplify. And again, very grateful for our ability to integrate digital resources because as you imagine, hands-on science has taken a little bit of a hit. However, we are so grateful that we have a program that provides a lot of digital and video resources so that the teachers are able to teach science in a meaningful way, K5 across our schools. And Mrs. Morelli, our science TA, has been able to support this process as well. And we have also been able to have science fairs on a voluntary basis across our buildings. And that has been supervised and run by Dr. Winkler. So in regards to K5 curriculum integration, I think we're in really great shape. And we're just very grateful, again, as the other principal said, for everything that our staff has done. When you walk into classrooms, you can't even imagine the creativity and the ways that teachers are just implementing tools and finding new ways to do things that are meaningful for students and engaging. And across the whole staff, you know, clerical, custodial, TAs, special ed aides, all kinds of support, monitors. We're just very grateful because morale is still very high in Hop Dog. We feel very fortunate. And I just want to also give a shout out to my staff and all of our elementary staff as well. So thank you for having me here tonight and stay safe.
Thank you, Dr. Musio. Any questions from any board members for any of the three principals? Any questions from the community?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Skreda.
First of all, thank you guys very much for coming to the meeting tonight. Is there anything else you folks need as far as safety goes for the schools with more students coming back now? Because now, are we going to be able to keep them further apart? Or... Because the classrooms will get more crowded then.
Mr. Gagliardi, for instance, your building happens to have the largest number of children.
Yes, we're okay with that, Dr. Ref.
Yeah, we've made adjustments. We've already had students come back after the last survey went out. And in those classrooms, we've adjusted seating arrangements. We're lucky because we have, you know, a few approaches, mitigation strategies. We have the masks, we have the screen guards.
They have everything they need.
Yeah, that's what I was going to bring up. Obviously, the screen guards that were put in beginning of the year have been awesome. You know, a clip break or the screen is faulty. We've been able to get replacements for those. So those have been great as another mitigation strategy with, you know, washing our hands or masks and watching our distance. So the screen guard really a welcome addition to keeping our kids and staff safe and healthy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any community members have any questions for the principals? So on behalf of the board, I just want to thank the three of you for coming tonight. And for sure, everything you've done over the last 12 months, this has been an experiment on the go. The things that we've been able to do in this district are really all because of staff and administration in the buildings. So thank you so much for your hard work. The fact that there aren't many questions should be a sign that you guys are doing a phenomenal, phenomenal job. Keep it up and thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So before we get to the budget, take a three-minute break to let anyone leave that wants to leave. The budget presentation will start at 8:28 exactly. This clock says 8:25 here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
You think they want to do the same thing three times?
Good job.
Thank you.
Yep, I think they have us.
Thank you.
All the resources you guys have given us.
Yes.
You guys have done truly amazing.
And so funny when you hear what schools like opening and stuff like that.
Yeah.
It's like, what are you talking about?
We've been here.
So it's interesting to hear that. Said, "How have you guys done it?" You know what, this isn't the type, this isn't a secret that you want to keep.
That's really right. When you see it in person, it's like...
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
That's much better.
My lady's signing this. No, it's not. I don't want this.
I didn't see the game. Was it the NBA or?
Well, we settled. They blackened out.
It did beat Creighton.
Because I know that's what he has to do.
Yeah. And he's scoring. Have you ever been to the big, tall, first? Those are the same.
No, we didn't. No, no. He was actually, he actually was. He usually wanted to say, "See you." See yours, see you, but go, let's go. Thank you. Thank you very much. Bye-bye. Yes, how are you, sir? You want a shake?
I have shoes.
Thank you. You're the fancy guy. I have to cop you. Now...
They're deep, but sporty.
I saved my suit. You have a different one to wear on Friday. You already have your red tie on you a couple of days early.
Oh, yeah, you know, I know. To be honest, my favorite day is the jeans day.
You like the jeans day? You know, with COVID now, we haven't worn ties in a while. We've always worn ties. You know, they didn't want us...
Get germs on them.
Yes, yes, exactly. Yeah, they sent down memos. They didn't want, you know... It says numbers to germ stuff. Is that right?
What's that?
They don't want, they don't want... You don't need that, right? So they basically sent out memo, try not to wear ties.
I wouldn't argue that.
Yeah, I didn't argue that.
Shouldn't wear it, right?
They... Dom!
Really?
Nothing... Nothing like you should have.
Yeah.
That's so good.
Yeah. She had to go through the different things. No, no, it was midnight.
Oh, see, you just read like a... Singapore.
Yes, and... So beautiful. Man stood up to... And robots, one another. So pretty. We sat for 45 minutes. We had, I didn't think we would get...
These are not as different compared. I heard it's huge.
You know, look at that. He, they were, they were... Jared was a little... We were... I had my turn. I really did. I had enough of my guys. I think for now, it could be... Actually, they're watching these. Rings are packed. Which is... Two people. Yeah. And if you decide to outside... So they were maybe listing... Well, the home on, they don't get there. They're trying to... Very busy. Tiny or small. But if you take care of the... At least there'll be an ass please. I'm sure a second might, you know, somebody might... Did you see that fight between Anthony and Yos? My friends. Perfect.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, my God, watch it.
I didn't see the clip.
Is that lady going to go to the ass? A lady got a... I guess instead of... I got it. That's us. And obviously, someone said to film it.
Of course, somebody said that.
Somebody's in there.
Somebody knows.
Can you keep it to an hour and a half, Jeff?
Just give up the good dust. Find out. Find out who gets it. Smiling Spanish.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. We're back. Uh, my apologies. A little later than I said. Uh, we'll get right to it. Five being on the agenda is the, uh, presentation of the twenty twenty one slash twenty twenty two school budget by, uh, Jackie Piro, Assistant Superintendent, uh, of Business and Operations. This is Piro.
Good evening. Uh, thank you guys for having us present the budget this evening. Uh, this is budget workshop number two of four. Tonight we review a little bit of the revenues, some expenditures, tax cap, and proposition number two. Where we met last, we did a budget overview. And then in two weeks from now, we'll come back and Dr. Murphy will join me and give us a little bit more curriculum instruction background as to what twenty one, twenty two will look like for us here at Hoppa. So just as a snapshot, uh, for twenty one, twenty two, we're looking at a post-budget that is an increase of roughly three point six five percent. Tax levy is an increase of one point three four percent. What does that mean? That means on budget vote day on the eighteenth, we are voting for a budget spending plan, um, of a hundred and nineteen million dollars. And the tax levy, um, is around ninety million dollars, which is a one point three four percent increase from the card here right now. And the budget is in compliance and the tax levy with the tax levy cap. So this chart sheet shows you some of the budget drivers for twenty one, twenty two year. Most of you have it either on the screen at home in front of you or paper in front of you here or in a little small print. But I'd like to do this to illustrate for you where the driving costs are in a budget every year. When you say, wow, how can you spend a hundred and twenty million dollars? Where does that go? These are the larger areas of the budget where our costs are centered around. So of course it's around our people, around our salaries, psychic taxes, our pension systems, health insurance, and benefits. Uh, this is not new news from other prior years. We kind of say this story kind of each year because this is where our costs really are. Uh, at the bottom though, I'd like to highlight at the very second to the last line, around four million dollars, roughly four percent is this stuff. You know, the supplies, the extracurricular, the coaching, the athletics. It's really not, that's the part we talk about. Um, but it's really not the largest part of our, our drivers in our budget, just to, to point that out. So at glance, what does it look in the graph? You can see that salaries at the FICA are fifty five percent. You add to that the health insurance to go around the bottoms to the right, pension, transportation, um, and, and such. You can see the largest part of our drivers, as we mentioned, pretty much annually, is our own people. And just a note about PRS and TRS, our pension systems, you know? We know history tends to repeat itself at times. And as you'll see here, compare the two pension systems, our teachers and our certified employees with their administrators or the teacher's retirement system. And our, uh, civil service employees and any non-certified staff members are in the employee's retirement system. So you'll see that they kind of mirror each other in their ups and downs and the peaks and valleys of, of the system. We're anticipating, um, as you can see for twenty one, twenty two, an increase we expect, you know, given the pandemic and revenues and, and the economy, we're expecting in the few years to come for those numbers to come, go back up again. Just so you can see the dollars that we spend on ERS and TRS collectively, um, you'll see that we're trending upwards in, in those dollars. Remember pension is tied directly to salaries. So there's a percentage of every, but every dollar earned in, in the school system, uh, we're paying a percentage to the pension systems for those dollars earned. So how do we fund the budget? We, but we fund in these six areas. We use the tax levy, seventy five percent of our revenues paid, uh, for, through tax levy. State aid, pilots, fund balance, other revenues, and reserves. So we use a healthy blend of all of the above. Um, roughly seventy five percent of our income is tax levy, state aid. Pilots are, are known right now. The numbers you have in front of you are still a little estimates. We kind of firm those up in a few weeks from now. We hopefully also get our new state aid numbers, um, overfired or finalized, I should say, for twenty one, twenty two. And we do use fund balance. We also have reserves. Just to show the revenues in the graph, similar to what we do on the expenditure side, you can see that the bulk of our revenues are our tax levy here. Uh, much of our tax levy is picked up by the industrial park that is here, um, in, in Hoppa. However, CD, the pounds again, just sort of those are the lands. Tax levy and the recommended budget are tax cap in compliance. That is, that is a yes. Um, as you'll see from the six categories in the top half of this slide, equal the expenses on the bottom, your revenues need to equal your expenses. That's how you fund the budget. And we do so in those categories that I noted there. We jump over to property tax cap. Um, we, now, by now, most of you can probably recite this, that the two percent, that the tax cap is not restricted to a simple levy increase of two percent. It's an eight step formula, a bit complicated. Uh, but we must use these, um, this formula to calculate our tax levy cap, um, as per law. So as a sample of what the tax levy calculation actually looks like, this is the compensation for all these categories. Uh, much of these numbers are given to us from outside agencies in principal state, um, such as the tax base growth factor, the allowable growth factor. And we use these numbers to get to the bottom number of, you see ninety million, fifty seven thousand, one hundred eighty seven. That is our tax having, tax levy limit for twenty one, twenty two. But again, just as a snapshot to reiterate, um, proposition one is the budget. Remember, when you go to vote on budget vote day on the eighteenth, you're voting for the budget. You're not actually voting technically on the levy. You're voting on the spending plan. Um, so what you see here is three point six five is the budget and the tax levy is an increase of one point three four from what we requested this year. I'll jump over to capital reserve and how it's funded. Um, this speaks to proposition chiefs. Generally speaking, the district, um, has capital reserves. We have two of them. Uh, these reserves enable the district to set aside funds for future capital projects. Establishing a reserve does not require additional taxes. Um, allows us to save the savings that we have in any given budget year to transfer those funds to basically savings account for a designated purpose. Um, here in Hoppa, we have two capital reserves. One we established in two thousand nine, the other one we established in two sixteen, two thousand sixteen. Um, each for different sums of money, as you'll read here, to do different types of projects. So we say, can you maybe please allow us to save money for these projects over the next eighteen years? And as we save the funds, we'll go back to the public and ask to spend the dollars that we've been saving. So we recall two summers ago, we did some bathroom roof renovations. We replaced roofs in recent years. Uh, and we plan to do the same thing again this year. Um, on the ballot on May eighteenth, we plan to have a second proposition. Uh, back in two thousand nineteen, we did a, did a quest, um, to replace Forest Brook, which we were able to do seventy five percent of it. Um, if you recall, the prices came in exceedingly higher than was anticipated. The, the prices were not the same as they were the prior year we did great woods. So we ended up doing seventy five percent of, of the roof. We have one wing left to finish of Forest Brook. So this year we'll be asking for proposition number two for six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars roughly to cover that last portion of Forest Brook's roof replacement. So as I mentioned earlier, we have four budget workshops. This is budget workshop number two. Uh, we'll be meeting back here on March twenty third to do the curriculum instruction budget components. That's a technology budget component. And all being well, April thirteenth will be the dot's budget. Um, and then in the top, our protection report card, we're ready for budget vote day. And eighteen, we will hold the voting here again in this room, the boil from six AM to ten PM. And all of our information for budget and voting is available on our website. And do you have any questions?
Mr. Screedon.
Thank you, Mrs. Piro. Um, two questions. Um, I guess I'm going to call them billions, billions. Um, but if that thing does pass, um, you're talking about like fifty billion dollars for New York State for education. Is that something that the community would see?
I would hope so, but I have not given any information how that was directly impact K twelve schools or how that would be allocated between different districts, different levels of property need and such. I don't, I don't know. I hope it would be, but we don't know at this point.
Can you explain to the, you know, the homeowners out there, the way the system, I want to say is rigged, it's almost best to go to the cap at all times, otherwise it hurts the school district because I'm still confused and I've been here a long time. I, I still don't understand how it's always best to go to the max.
What happens if you don't raise the taxes into what you are allowed to and you shorten that? The following year, you're restricted that much more of what you're permitted to raise. So let's say we left a hundred thousand dollars on the table this year. That becomes the new starting point, the next year, in which that calculation runs off of. If you flip back to the tax calculation, the tax cap calculation that provided in the handout, the very first number, the starting point, is the prior year levy. So if you keep that number shorter than it can be, you're thereby starting at a lower starting point. You're kind of, every year you're getting deeper and deeper shorter and not able to raise as much dollars you want to put have. So it's something that you lose forever. You don't get that money back. So if you say, oh, we'll, we'll, we'll save a hundred thousand dollars, we'll be below the cap this year. Next year, what will do? Can't. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. You don't get that, those dollars or that flexibility back.
I'll go back to my school days when they used to burn the oil during the springtime. So they got the same amount of oil for the next year. We used to sit there at roast in the spring. So there is no way I'm just, I have to know. I talked to homeowners about, I'm confused how it's, the advantage of school district to keep. We never can take a lower cut.
Well, as you see from our revenues, seventy five percent of our revenue is, is the tax levy. To, to, so to keep the district coming along the way we are and everything great for kids and all, all programs intact and all the wonderful things we're able to do, you want to have as much resources as you can to support that.
Maybe I could, if, uh, let's just make up a number, but if your levy was two million dollars on a given year and you decided to levy only one point five million, then the next year, your starting point is one point five million. You've left five hundred thousand dollars on the table that you didn't utilize for programs. And so as costs go up, you more quickly put yourself in a position where you have to make a decision to reduce programs because you left that money behind.
No, I understand, Dr. Howard. I appreciate that, that, you know, we all run households and that would be like, I have to spend as much as I can so I have more again next year. We don't live that way. It's, it's, it's a weird way to live that you actually have to, you know, expense more.
Yeah, well, that's the, that's the wisdom of the tax cap.
We're going to have less students, Dr. Howard, each year for the next four to five years, yet our expenses will keep going up. I don't know. I, I'm a little confused at different math.
There's just one, one thing, we're not spending more to meet the cap. We have to make productions to even get to that cap.
Right.
So that's the difference. We're not spending more simply to keep it in there. We're already above it. Our expenses are growing more rapidly than the tax cap allows. So we have to kind of peel back to get to the cap.
Which is, which is the original goal of the tax levy cap, is to slow that growth. So districts are cutting to get down to the cap.
Once again, we're going back before pandemic, we had a clock we were talking about. Just has the pandemic sped up that clock that makes the Hoppa school district belly up?
It slowed it down actually for us.
Temporarily has slowed it down. You have yet to see what the CD projections will be in future years to know what our revenue is going to be. You know, we are fourteen percent of our, our revenue is CD. So it's not huge, but it's still very important to us, obviously, because if that goes away, we're, we're going to be really, really tightened. Um, but yeah, we don't, we don't really, we're not going to know the complete fallout of what's going to happen. And I mentioned a little bit of ERS, we know our costs going up, but the board was smart last year. We could have put our savings into reserves so we could use it when the rainy day needs to happen.
I just bring it up, Mrs. Piro, because I believe it was Northport School District where they lost certain industry and all of a sudden the community had an eye open that next year. So just to run that concern. Thank you.
Further questions from the board concerning the budget presentation? Mr. Fortmeyer?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Piro, we often talk about a two percent tax cap, but this year the allowable, um, levy growth factor is one point two three percent. Is that based on, based on the rate of inflation?
That's correct.
So this year we're actually getting considerably less than.
That's correct. Went down a large.
Two, three.
Yep.
Which translates to the one point three four, I understand.
Correct. It was one point eight last year.
Yeah.
So it went down substantially.
Um, in terms of pilots, do we have any idea how much we lose in terms of taxes? Because certainly property is subject to pilots and not true tax levy.
I don't really know. And I say that because even the number that I have here is over seven million dollar number. A lot of that is based on estimates that we get from the local municipalities. So with that said, I know of three changes on major properties that will impact the number that I have in here already, um, that will do on the last, you know, when I get all the changes done. We have pilots coming in, one spent a hundred forty thousand dollars and will likely lower that number, which impacts everything you see here. Um, but I don't know the exact number that we lose for taxes. Just say, I don't know if anybody has that analysis done. It's, it's so many different agencies that even run these, the IDA, the town, it's the county.
Now, when, when a property is subject to pilot and not taxes, is it correct to say that the value of that property comes off essentially comes off of tax hole? It doesn't get spread over the rest of the base?
No, and.
So it disappears?
It disappears over time, well, pretty quickly, and you hope that the pilot lasts longer. The problem is we're not always at the bargaining table with that pilot.
Where's the base of that?
Uh, the, the owner.
The owner. In terms of investment, uh, I mean, just from a personal standpoint, we all see bank rates going down. How do you project where you think you're going to be and can you take advantage of? I know you can't do true investing like most of you.
Correct.
You're limited to.
No risk.
Savings. But can you take advantage of some of the higher CD rates and so forth?
We can, we can do CDs if we have the, the liquidity enough to do it. You need liquidity, you need enough time to do it. So for us right now, we typically start borrowing our money from our TANs in the summer. So there's a short window of time when we can take you a little bit. The dollars you make aren't right now anything even a CD.
The ratio is too short to really make.
And remember, as a municipality, we don't really get billed fees for our banking. It's all the bad. So they're in there, but we don't feel them. What we don't earn in interest, we save in borrowing, right? So they're inverted. So our TAN costs will be much lower, I'm guessing, this year. Um, so they kind of cancel each other out, what we pay to borrow our TANs each year and then what we don't earn in revenue. It affects the budget differently because it's revenue expense sides, but it's, they kind of equal each other out.
Thank you.
Further questions from the board? Questions from the community concerning the budget presentation only? Thank you, Dr. Adams, Piro. Hey, Skid, can you, can you kill that? Can you guys hear that high pitch? What is it? What is that? And the war minus go through there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you're older than we are.
Mr. Screedon, do you hear it?
I, I'm a scientific guy.
All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll tough it out.
We can go to Dunkin' Donuts and get a four beer.
Don, if you could just have someone look at the floor and have us meeting. Okay, here we go. Five C on the agenda, uh, five C on the agenda, adoption of minutes on the budget and community meeting of February twenty third, twenty twenty one. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fortmeyer. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Buscarino. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed, intentions? Mike, did you vote? All right, seven, zero. Questions and comments from the community? Questions and com, you guys did hear that? Questions and comments from the community concerning tonight's agenda only? Are there any, um, items that members would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda in total. Thank you, uh, Mr. Buscarino. Thank you, Mr. Buscarino. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Weisberg. Discussion? All those in favor? Eight on the agenda policies we have on tonight. Committee reports will be put on our next business meeting agenda. Discussion matters, there are none. New business? Do any board members have new businesses? Dr. Craft, there was an issue concerning multiple COVID tests from one of our constituents. Do you recall that?
I do. There was concern that some of the high-risk sports now require to do testing twice a week, when last season, which was basketball and wrestling, we only did it once a week. So that was the question, why all of a sudden we doing it twice a week? Then I could explain our thinking, or Dr. O'Hara?
Well, if there's a medical issue, you could explain that. But the context I'd like to provide is that the way the mid-winter recess was, and the way we were on distance learning the week following mid-winter recess, there were no athletic competitions for wrestling and basketball that took place while students would return to school. So there was very little likelihood that if the virus spread through that athletic event, that the students were bringing it into the classroom. But with this particular season, we have two high-risk sports, and we have a six-week season, and we have no vacations, and we have no distance learning. So we felt like it was really necessary to have a better handle on possible exposure by having more than one test per week.
I think another factor was, you know, the fact that most of these kids playing the sports are in school. The majority of kids, when you look at the percentages, don't play sports, and our job is to protect everybody. So, you know, waiting a full week to get someone tested when we know how quickly COVID can spread, it just makes, you know, much more sense to do it twice a week.
Those are rapid tests? Those are rapid tests we're using? Have those, have they gotten more reliable, or are they still?
I'll defer to Dr. Craft.
Depends which one you're using. There's so many out there. There's been maybe some improvement, but they're all user dependent. If they're not doing the swab right, then it really decreases the accuracy.
We're having a company, do those swabs?
Yes, it's the same company, Sunday and Wednesdays. I can, you know, just to go back to what we talked about the very, very beginning of this pandemic, you know, you don't have the ability to completely reduce the risk, but we're working really hard to mitigate the risk. And these twice-per-week tests is one way to mitigate the risk.
Have we had hits, positive tests on the rapids?
Through the wrestling season, we had, of all the athletes that were tested, one positive. And then, to my knowledge, none though so far for this, for the fall season, what they call the fall season.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hara. Any other new business from board members? New business from administration?
None, thank you.
Questions and comments from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? Mr. Russo?
All right, let's go.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
We recently got a letter about a new guidance counselor in the high school. Is that just a substitute, or is she a permanent position?
She's a leave replacement.
Okay, so next year, if Ms. Bartlett comes back, okay. And that leads me to, do we have any updates on Dr. Probst's replacement? How the interview process is going, what's going on with that?
No. The board has decided to wait until the appointment of our next superintendent to fill that position.
Okay, I'm just concerned with the high school senior. This is like our critical point, especially at the beginning part of next year, about having someone in place to, you know, guide all these, you know, senior parents. I know with my son, it was an amazing experience going through it that other districts didn't have, talking to friends. So will that give us enough time to get a person in there?
We hope so. We believe so. We do have Dr. Probst through June, and the search will commence immediately thereafter, and we will have people in place in the interim.
What about the programs for the summer that they always have for the seniors, essay writing, all those other things, will they still stay in place at this point?
You know, we don't plan to take our foot off the gas. So Dr. Probst will be working to have everything in place.
Okay, with the guidance department that we have, okay. That's one. Second question is, what is the protocol with when we are virtual? Are the people at home submitting the Google Docs, reading their actual questions, or just deciding, oh, we're not going to, we can't answer that? Because I submitted a question that had nothing to do with Dr. O'Hara's contract, and it was totally grouped in, we can't answer that. So I just feel, and I don't know if it would be asked the lawyers, but...
Wendy, what was the question?
I wanted to know if the board was unanimous on the vote not to renew his contract. So it wasn't asking anything about him, it was asking about the board's decision.
So I'll just ask the attorney whether we're allowed to answer that. And if we're allowed, then we will. And if we're not allowed, then we're not allowed.
But don't you think that my actual point is, I don't even need that answer at this point. My actual point is...
I'm sorry, you don't want the answer to the question?
I know the answer now, so I'm not worried about it. The question, I mean, if you want to ask so people out there could know the answers, that's fine. So ask the lawyer if we can answer it.
Are we allowed to answer that question? The question is, correct me if I'm wrong, whether the board's decision not to renew Dr. O'Hara's contract was unanimous?
Yes. Yep. You shouldn't think that not the subject, that was the question.
The vice of counselors were not allowed to answer that question.
It was an executive session, can't be discussed, is that?
I don't know if that's the rationale or not.
That was what she said.
Okay, good, that's what she said. Okay, my point really was, if as easy members, we can't be here, whether we're virtual or people are at home not wanting to come, shouldn't their question be read and who submitted it if people want? Like, I just feel like the community can't be heard if they're stuck at home.
So the point I made last week, and I'll make it again, the questions concerning Dr. O'Hara's contract, and we're now discussing it again, but the questions concerning Dr. O'Hara's contract kept coming from the same two or three people that knew that we couldn't answer it. And my concern was that it would cast a negative aspersion on Dr. O'Hara if we kept on saying, we can't answer the question, we can't answer the question, we can't answer the question. So I made a determination last week, as is my responsibility, that we weren't going to read questions concerning Dr. O'Hara's contract that we weren't allowed to answer. Because it was not fair to him that every time we say, we can't comment, we can't comment, we can't comment, that someone is going to read negatively into that, and that could affect Dr. O'Hara.
Okay, but...
But we're now talking about it again.
No, what the question is, what about any other question?
Of course, of course, of course.
Because there have been people that have said that their questions weren't read not to do with him.
So Dr. Murphy, Dr. Murphy does his best to moderate the questions. If he grouped a question that wasn't concerning Dr. O'Hara's contract in with those questions, it was not intentional, okay? So if you tell me now, any other questions that you believe were grouped in there that were not answered, that should be answered, ask them, and we'll answer them right now if we're able to. If we're not able to, we won't.
Only me, so I can't speak for other people?
Okay, so, fair enough. Here's my strong suggestion, if I may, here's my strong suggestion. Anyone who had a question that they feel was unfairly grouped in with the questions that we said we cannot answer, email them, don't use the Google form, email them to Dr. Murphy directly. Dr. Murphy will ask those questions that we're allowed to answer at our next meeting. But we will not continually read questions concerning Dr. O'Hara's contract. It's not fair to him, and it's not fair to us.
Okay. Lastly, we discussed senior prom. Any talk about the junior prom?
That I don't know. Does anyone know about the junior prom? Nope.
Not that much.
Is there a specific question, or you just want to know in general whether there's going to be?
If they're going to be able to have one. I know they're shopping for dresses. I don't want to spend money on something we're not having.
I hear. So I'll respectfully ask Dr. Probst to report back at our next meeting concerning whether there is a junior prom.
Well, it's not, yeah, I'll work on it with the, that's my per role, I'll work on it with the...
Okay.
I mean, listen, I, you know, the... For full disclosure, your announcement tonight caught me a little bit off guard. I had put in a packet, but I wasn't present for a discussion. So I can make an assumption that we'll follow the same guidance from the board, and we will do whatever we can to make sure that we have the junior prom to the extent that the Department of Health permits those kinds of things.
Is the daughter going to go by the doors?
Well, I guess. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Yes.
Progress on the buildings now?
I will ask Jackie.
So the last time we met, two weeks ago, nothing has really changed to be honest with you. We expect the contract perhaps to be brought to the board at some point on the agenda, as you would say. And at that point, no decisions about this property sale would be made without going to a public referendum.
Not only that, Mr. Russo, there'll be public hearings before the referendum. So this isn't going to be something that pops up on anyone's...
Would the vote go during the budget vote?
No.
Or it has to be a totally separate vote?
It'd be a totally separate vote that is financed by the purchaser. So there's no cost to the district, and purchaser will do all of the advertisements and the public hearings as well. I think. Ms. Piro, yes? I got that one right. Any further questions or comments from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? Ms. Anderson? All right, with that, I will take a motion for an adjournment.
David, there's some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. See that? So...
That was rehearsed.
Yes. Please, Don, moderate the questions the best you can, and, yeah, please, go ahead.
Sure, so there are two questions related to the prom which you have addressed.
Well, were those addressed?
Well, one was from last week. Did I hear correctly that senior prom is unlikely, even with vaccines and the easing of Cuomo's restrictions?
So they may have heard correctly then, but it is no longer correct. It will be a senior prom.
It's a different email address, but it looks like it's the same individual, Ms. Bowler, asked again today, given the latest guidance from Governor Cuomo, wanted to address senior prom. I won't read the rest of it, but I believe you've addressed that tonight. One more, next question is from Elliot Barr. When will sports begin for middle school students? Any chance that sports intramurals can begin, continue over summer break? I did reach out to Ms. Butler. The fall season for middle school sports will begin March 22, and the spring season starts May 10. Mrs. O'Connor sent out a parent's card message with the details and forms for fall sports last week.
Yeah, can you synthesize that for Dr. O'Hara?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all right. You missed the very beginning of it.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right. Just, you know, distill it down, if you could.
When will sports begin for middle school students was the question.
Oh, there is a date. I don't remember the exact date. 22nd? Yeah, 3/22.
Sorry?
Coaches were appointed tonight.
Coaches were appointed tonight in personal action report.
Yeah, I'll just repeat, it was March 22 for the fall season for middle school, and the spring season starts May 10. And Mrs. O'Connor did send something out. Traditionally, well, he also had, traditionally, there have been, you know, different camps offered at the high school over the summer. She asked about the summer. But of course, we can't guarantee those camps will continue this year. It's just too much up in the air. Next question is from Dawn Thomas Ferraro. Just received my property tax school increase of 8.7%. Just go for the question. I'll just read it all. Been here for 17 years, last five years, all were 2.6%, one year being 4%. I listened to the budget meeting last year, no increases, is what I heard. I want to know how this is justified, especially during a pandemic, or at all. What is my son getting that there is an increase of this manner? Everything is less. There was no one in the buildings for six months, no busing, no sports, nothing. What's the increase for? We don't want to leave Hop Off, but honestly, this is ridiculous. Please respond.
Yeah, so I know the board members individually have gotten a lot of questions concerning what appears to be a huge disparity between the Islip side and the Smithtown side as far as property taxes go. Dr. O'Hara, Ms. Piro, can you touch on that? The reason why that happened, if you know, and whether we have any control over that as a district?
Yes, I can answer that. So want to know, we do not have the control.
Jackie, I'm sorry, can you just keep your voice up a little bit?
Sure. We don't have control over who pays how much of the levy that we set. So last year, the district raised, the tax levy was increased by 2.3%. That does not mean that every homeowner will receive a 2.3% increase on their tax bill. That would be ideal, and that would make sense, and be very transparent, but that's unfortunately not how it works out. This year, there is always a formula behind the scenes that determines how the tax bills show up when you're accepted, and how each homeowner pays how much. This year, the burden, the larger portion of the burden of our school tax was pushed to the town of Islip, and the town of Smithtown, not so much. What does that mean? That means this crazy 8.7 number that people are seeing on the Islip side of the community, they're seeing this number, we're getting 9% more, or not. The district is still only getting the 2% more than they requested, but we're getting more of those dollars from the town of Islip residents. Is it ideal? No. Is it fair? We would argue either way. Last year, Smithtown's taxes went up a bit more than the Islip side. But this is a big number, I'm not doubting it. Looking at a 9% increase on any tax bill, school taxes, and we're saying we're not raising them. We understand that. However, it has to do with equalization rate that was set by New York State for all the different municipalities, and the change in that rate was much more significant for Islip than it was for Smithtown. Not all districts will face this, because not all districts have two towns. St. James, for example, goes through three towns, Annapolis, Islip, and Smithtown. And they had a huge issue. I've been yielding phone calls since December on this issue because it's a big number, people don't know where to go, and want to know how come. We did not raise taxes 9%, the increase led to a 2.3%. But how those dollars are collected for each individual homeowner is beyond our control.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, Mrs. Maita always also asked about the prom, which was addressed. And then the last question is from Mrs. Krylovich. I'm looking, I'm just looking for clarification concerning the bathrooms. Will all bathrooms be non-gender specific, or just be single-use bathrooms?
So, Mr. Tasman, last week, we approved on emergency basis a policy to bring the district up to speed concerning requirements that the state handed down. Could you just briefly just recount what those requirements are concerning non-gender-specific bathrooms?
Yes, they're only for the single-stall bathrooms in the buildings will be non-gender specific. The single-stall bathrooms.
Single-stall bathrooms in all buildings will be non-gender specific. And the ones multi-stall will remain whatever gender they have been?
Correct. That was her question. That was it.
Any further questions?
No.
Okay. Ms. Kavanaugh, I just want to circle back on one thing that you said that didn't dawn on me, the gravity of it while you were up there. But you indicated that since our last meeting, you've been advised as to what went on in executive session.
There was a newspaper article that someone brought to my attention, I think the Smithtown News.
Yeah, so can I?
It was a unanimous vote, so I don't know where that article is coming from, but...
So I won't comment on that specific issue concerning how the board determined how to handle Dr. O'Hara's contract, but I will say that that article had more than a couple of inaccuracies.
Okay, then, I'm not sure. But when I brought that to my attention, that that article was out there.
Got it, no, and I appreciate you clarifying that.
Can I just go back to the budget real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I...
Wendy, do you mind? I'm sorry. Do you mind going up to the microphone so that people at home can hear you?
Um, you had said during your budget presentation, we get a lot from the industrial farm. If some of these buildings start ending up vacant, um, you know, a lot of people working from home, people not paying rent, does that affect the income to the district? I mean, I understand the banks will be paying the taxes, but eventually things are just going to start failing with that.
To your point, actually, Ms. Scorino worked it up last year. This time last year, when we have these concerns, we have been made whole. We are not being shorted currently. We haven't been. Uh, the owners who are physically in those locations are still responsible to pay the debt that they have to pay, whether they're physically in them or not, uh, whether or not they get re-rented or re-moved or what happens with the locations. There's the, while they own it, they still have the, the burden of paying those pilots on those, on those parcels. So far, we have a new shorting rule. Um, I don't anticipate it, but I, you know, never say never, apparently, these things, but yeah.
Thinking long-term because, you know, a lot of those buildings, it's going to be a problem probably.
At some point.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
If I might add more, of course, I'll come back to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Kavanaugh. Uh, any further questions or comments from anyone, uh, concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? Okay, uh, do we have any issues for executive session tonight?
You guys cover everything. It's on the other side.
Okay, great. So there'll be no executive session, uh, tonight. Our next, uh, budget meeting, our next meeting, rather, is a budget and community meeting on March twenty third, twenty twenty one. We, we will again be in person for that meeting, uh, pending or unless something happens. Uh, we'll be here. Hope you are here as well. And with that, I will take a motion for adjournment. Fortmeyer, the motion I will second. Any discussion on adjournment? All those in favor? Seven zero, we are adjourned. See everyone on March twenty third. Be safe. Thank you.